We have a forum, but our attendance is sparse, I see. So so far, just Frank, Lisa, oh, no, we have Sally. So we have five folks. Shiloh's with us as well. So I think we'll get started because I'm about to say that starting and ending on time is one of the best practices for meetings. So we're going to observe that rule. Good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, December 7, 2021 workshop agenda for committee discussion. And I have in attendance myself, Blake Baldman, Sally Carpenter, Frank Paul, Lisa Pratt, and Shiloh Shulte. We are joined also by Mike Pardue and Joel Downs. We have a whole host of public attendees who I now have on my screen, so I won't overlook them during comments. And I wanted to start the meeting with a a challenge to the select board to perhaps do a better job of setting objectives for these workshops. I think our workshops heretofore have had some pretty good conversations, but they lacked any sort of purpose. And in the end, a lot of them kind of went out on a on a very low note without any sort of decisions having been made, not official decisions, but at least in terms of what next steps would be. And so what I'm suggesting is that we make it a custom and practice to set objectives. Now, the good news for us tonight is that Lisa has done that. Normally, our workshop agenda would simply say discuss town committees, and that isn't an agenda really or objectives. It's just sort of a task. So I went out and researched best practices for meetings. I've done that many times in my career. Obviously, the first thing you need to do is set an agenda, but the agenda must be objective based. What is it your time to accomplish? Secondly, you need to end with an action plan, and all we all know that our workshops cannot we do not conduct official business during these workshops. We don't vote or anything of that nature, but we certainly could create an action plan without without conducting business. And the other item is that you should start and end on time. And in that regard, I think open ended in meetings are probably not a good idea because when you have a set timeline, then when you have a definitive start and end period, then you ensure that you're driving towards the accomplishment of the objectives that you have. So unless anyone wants to object or discuss, I propose that we adopt Lisa's objectives, which are philosophy, policy, roles and responsibilities, relationship to the select board of the select board and liaison liaison and staff. And then finally, if we have time, discuss community or committee, she was committee appreciation event. So anybody comments on that?
I'm generally supportive.
Little supports it. Okay.
I was gonna say supportive of the idea of having more structured workshops with objectives coming out of them, but still leaving some opening for a little bit of a pre form discussion, but I'm very much in favor of the idea of having structured outcomes. So yes.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board before I turn to the public? Yes, Sally. You're muted, Sally.
Um, I agree with having a start and an endpoint to the meeting because I think that will make us more productive and gives us a goal to get business done and get it done in a timely fashion might be better utilization of our time.
And thank you, Sally. Anyone else? Lisa, you're 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 good.
I'm good. I like the action plan at the end. I think that that's really important to these workshops. So thank you.
Very good, Lisa. Turning to the public, John Costin, welcome.
Thank you. So I have certainly been given this a lot of thought, and I'll just try to keep myself focused on this particular question that you've put out. I don't have any concerns about the plan that you've laid out for tonight, but the more I think about this, it's unclear to me, and perhaps it's clear to others what the goal of the workshop on committee process is. And perhaps there are different goals for different players. But it seems like you undertook this workshop on committees process to discuss committees. And I think that that your stated intention of having clearer goals is a good one. But it's not clear to me what the goal of this process is. Is it to is it to change it? Is it to revise it? I don't know.
If I could. Um, so when we proposed this workshop at the select board meeting, maybe towards the end of October, early November, I can't quite remember the sole purpose, although things have evolved, but the sole purpose was for the select board to decide what the role of committees in the town of Kennybunk is. At our last workshop, I gave some background on what committees functions are, and it's just it's a process like we had discussed at the last workshop. It's hopefully we can come up with some more action plans like Blake said. But I think that it's important to get some background and to some understand what committees are about and what they do and how they function so that we can have a meaningful discussion. And so it's an evolution, but essentially right now, we're trying to decide what the role of committees in the town of Kennybunk is because as the charter is currently written, the select board is in charge of those boards and commissions and in parentheses committees. Like other thoughts?
Well, the other thing that you're going to see tonight is a draft policy and policy objectives. And I think that's an important evolution in our process of having these workshops is to actually work on a policy that's written and has objectives that we can then bring to a regular meeting for public discussion and hopefully implement on a going forward basis. So you'll see you'll see that later in Lisa's presentation. So I think what if you were asking me, John, what I would I hope to get out of this meeting, I think the goal is to is to get committees back to where they may have been in the past or get them on a path where the three parties to that relationship feel that they're in a a good working relationship between the committee, the board, and the town staff, and that we're all working on agreed upon objectives rather than finding ourselves in conflict and disagreement over what the role of committees or an individual committee might be. And I would observe that not all committees are disaffected by the current situation or the current way committees are run. We have many committees that are perfectly happy with the relationship they have with the board and with the town staff. But it's not enough that we have just a few committees happy. I think we're striving to get everyone pulling their oars in the same direction so that we move swiftly down the current. Back to you, Lisa.
Yep, I agree with you, Blake. The other thing I like to keep using is the fact that we're trying to create effective committees and stay on that path to make sure that an effective committee helps in supports an effective board. So that's my my goal is to continue to use that term effective committee. I think that's important. All right. So I'm going to attempt to screen share.
I before you do, if I could just follow up, um, thank you. So it seems like if I if I can reflect this back, and if I have this incorrectly, please correct me. But it seems like what is motivating this is the sense that the current committee system is not functioning as well as we would like it to. That's that I feel like I've heard that in what you said, Blake, but you've said, Lisa, and what I've heard from others. And yet I don't think that there has been an identification of the ways in which it's not working well that has been comprehensive. And I would just suggest that if that's the goal, and if that's what's motivating it, perhaps part of the process would be having stakeholders identify what they think is not working well before we move to defining and redefining in solutions. And I'll and I'll leave it at that. And thank you.
Thank you, John. Well, we are going to discuss that as well this evening. So over to Lisa.
All right. Let's see if this works. I don't know why. It's a new computer. And
rut row.
I think I need to spend some time with Mike and
can you, I'm going to request access. You have to grant me access for me to
Okay. I sent you the link. Did the link not work?
Yeah, just but you have to respond back with
Okay.
permission. And then I will I will your able body assistant here.
I appreciate that, Blake.
Yep.
Let's see.
Wasn't that long ago that we are all in that condition with this stuff?
I know. I was talking to somebody recently, and they said it's just an expectation now, and people come to meetings that there will be Zoom glitches.
Did you get my request?
I did. I sent a confirmation to you.
All right, let's refresh and see what happens here. There we go. All right.
All right.
All right. So as I recall, last time I couldn't tell my right from my left.
Yes, so it'd be your right.
I already got it. So
Okay.
Just let me share a screen. There we go. And whoops, there we go. No.
Almost.
Stand by.
So I do have some things I want to talk about in this slideshow. And then hopefully, most of it can be discussion. But I think, like I was saying to John, it's important to get some background. And I like to make sure we all are on the same page and have all the information. So obviously, welcome. Thank you for everyone for participating in part two. And like I said, I'll move through this quickly, and then hopefully we can get to some discussion. Okay, next. Nope.
What?
Nope, back again. There we go. I just want to give credit where credit is due. These are my resources. And I just wanted to say that Personify is a group that specializes in organization management, which I found them very full of information. Can't think of the word. But anyway, I just wanted to give credit. All right, next. And I'm a visual person, and this is a graphic, and I think that this is important just for us to see. We've got different groups. We've got citizens, committees, the select board and town staff. And I think our ultimate goal is to bring each group to the table and have a meaningful conversation. Next. All right. So this is just a little review. Like I said, so we're all on the same page. A committee is a group of people who are chosen usually by a larger group or board to make decisions or to deal with a particular subject. Committees are typically defined by organizational bylaws, charters, or other formal documents. And I think that we've already discussed in the past, but our charter is a little vague, and that's probably something that we should work on. Next. So I read this at our last workshop, but I think it's important to be reiterated. We're making steps towards our strategic plan. And this is important for having effective committees. Committee work should supplement what the town and the select board's vision of the future of Kennybunk is. And I think that that's why we're here tonight. So I'm just going to read quickly. Boards need to regularly evaluate their existing committee structure and be ready to adjust it based on the organization's changing governance needs or strategic plan. Most boards continue in the same committee structure from year to year with little thought given as to what the committees do or whether they are still relevant. As a result, the committees have vague objectives. Committee meetings are often endless discussions with no results achieved, and the members of the committees become bored or frustrated. All right, next. So this is some new information that I found that I thought was really relevant and really spoke to me. And so I wanted to share this, that many habits of high functioning boards hold true for committees and task forces. They build a healthy culture that is thoughtful, informed, courteous, and candid. Candid. They they're ready to make recommendations or decisions if the board has delegated that authority. They consider staff as partners and trusted advisors. Their members come prepared. Developing high functioning committees takes dedication and effort. And I think that's on everyone's part. Next. So right now. Oh, nope, back. Yeah, there we go. These are the committees we're focused on. I believe the 12 binding committees are functioning well and serve a purpose. So these are our non binding committees. If someone feels or a group feels that we need to address the binding committees, I am perfectly happy to address them in the future. But right now, I just want everyone to know that we're focusing on these committees, these specific non binding committees. We also have two committees, the Community Development Advisory Committee and the Waterhouse Committee. They exist due to bylaws, and we won't be addressing them or their function at this point. They meet as needed. And we don't really have any control over them. Finally, we have five committees that I believe we can take action on, and I would like to discuss those a little bit later. Next. So I just wanted to share quickly what I've learned about the types of committees and what I think is leading to some confusion. The model that the town of Kennybunk currently uses is that board members serve as liaisons and staff as consultants with committees. Things are, and forgive my terms, but they're just a little bit looser, and we don't address policy. Most committees are trying to take action. Initiatives or tasks and tasks are more the focus of this model. As an example, the model that RSU 21 School Board uses is that each board member is required to chair a committee, to be an official voting member of multiple committees. And RSU 21 Staff Directors are also official members. The community members are limited to one or two. And so these committees are involved in policy discussion. This is more an official type of committee, but also requires much more time commitment from board members as well as staff. Community members are, for lack of a better term, like I said, less involved. So I just wanted to clarify the two types that I think people are kind of confusing. Next. So after learning about these different models, I think I thought that this was an important fact that boards should avoid the temptation to form too many committees. To be effective and to avoid burnout, board members should generally not serve on more than two committees. Limiting service to one committee can give board members the opportunity to focus on an area and develop expertise that can further the work of the town staff. Next. So I have to give props to my stepdaughter. She created this graphic for me at the last minute, but I think it's really important that we all look at this and agree with this. I think that Blake has often referred to our tri-party system. And I think this is what we're all trying to accomplish. I think this graphic right here, and we're accountable to each other. And no matter who you or how you flip it and who you put on top, you're still accountable to the other two groups, and they're accountable to you. So I think I just wanted people to see this visual and know that, and hopefully, we can all agree that this is what we're all working towards. Next. And so we've all learned that in successful organizations, committees help further the ideas put forth in a board strategic plan. I also think that we need to discuss what the staff's role is, and I think that this is really important. I know there's some members of the staff here tonight. And hopefully, we can all come to an agreement on this. Staff liaisons work in partnership with committees and task forces to enable their success, offer suggestions and observations, and manage day to day operations. For standing committees, like essentially we're talking about, staff also often serve as the historical reference for past decisions and recommendations. Staff members should be trained to support committees and task forces and build that effective partnership with volunteer leaders. Often, staff liaisons are assigned to committee or task work, task force work based on their role in the organization. But just because someone is an expert in a particular focus or field does not mean they're an expert in volunteer management. Educate staff to support committees and task forces, and ultimately, the board will function better, too. Next. So obviously, we're looking at this triangle, and we've talked about staff, and we've talked about other things, but the what is the committee's volunteers role? And so eventually, we're going to talk about the committee handbook, and I know that was attached as a reference material to this agenda. And so hopefully, I don't want to go over the committee handbook at this juncture. But I think that it really lays out specifically what committee volunteers roles are. And hopefully, everyone's looked at that. And if you have questions, comments, concerns, please reach out. But I think that that's a really important document that we're going to lean on a little bit more. Next. So I just wanted to give a little preference, and then I'm going to have Blake speak to this. But at our previous workshop, Bill was intrigued to know what other town committee structures were. And I didn't realize this fact until Blake proposed the policy to me that other towns did have policies that dictated the relationship between their select boards or town councils, committees, and town staff. York clearly states the three will work together. My hometown of Madison, Connecticut, states that committees do work dictated to them by their Board of Selectmen. Wells has a really good tri-party relationship. Holderness, New Hampshire, has a very clear and detailed policy, but all of their committees are binding. So it's really interesting that everyone's a little bit different, but they these towns, these are, I just kind of went all over New England. But these towns do all have a policy, and I think that this is really important for us to move forward. I really think that this one is clear and emphasizes collaboration and communication, which I'm a huge fan of. And this is our chance at a new beginning. And so I'd like Blake to speak a little further on it.
Thank you, Lisa. The it seemed to me that what we lack is written policies. We've gotten out of the habit of doing that if we ever did have that habit as a select board. I don't recall us having done something of this nature. At least during the five and a half years I've been on the board, I may have forgotten, but I think it's a good practice of us to write policy. And I've taken a stab at doing that in this, in what you see on the screen here. And I think what you'll see in a moment are policy objectives that would be the next steps to implement the policy. So the policy is is a flight level 390 look at what we're trying to accomplish. It creates a statement of what we're trying to, of what we have in terms of resources, and then a statement on how we intend to deploy those resources to our mutual benefit. So I hope that this, if not this exact writing, we can certainly wordsmith it. But I but I hope that this becomes a regular routine for this board going forward, that that we have the intellectual rigor to go through the process of actually writing down what our policies are going to be. And obviously, that involves input from the public as well as town staff. Further into the diagram that that Lisa showed early. So back to you, Lisa.
And next slide, that is the objectives. And like Blake said, these are what we Blake specifically, I should give him all the credit. Uh, where'd it go?
Oh, I'm sorry. Whoops, my bad.
That's okay. So next are the objectives that Blake came up with. He and I have discussed them. We are definitely open to adding to this. Courtney has given me a couple of suggestions. I kind of have put it past a couple of people. And one suggestion that she made, and she might speak further to later, is that she had suggested adding exit interviews. I know Shiloh didn't was a little, he was questioning frequent frequent status reports. But I am a true believer, and Blake knows this about me, that we need to keep ourselves accountable. And I think that it's really important that we do this and that we set a regular schedule. I like quarterly. I know there have been other suggestions, but I think that staying on top of each other, well, that doesn't sound good, but staying in communication with each other and on top of each other's initiatives quarterly is a really good way to keep communication and collaboration open.
So the, you know, you can read these objectives is just short action steps. Successful integration is the action step ongoing and effective communication, frequent status reports, and create a process for introducing new conceptual initiatives. And it's the fourth one that I think gets to one of the concerns that I've heard from committees that they you know, I think right now we've had at least three suggestions about what committees should be. There's the June Houston model, which is that that committee should be creators. There's John's idea of policy creators. And then there's, of course, the one that we mostly have been following, which is that they help the town by taking on part of the workload that is confronting all of us. And so I there may be others, but I do want to acknowledge that that this is not just a group of people who are doing tasks, but they can also hopefully pursue into the fourth objective here, introduce new and conceptual initiatives. But the point, I think, goes back to the first one that that we all are working on agreed upon initiatives, not ones that that we have not all concurred on. Back to you, Lisa.
I think that what Blake said is really important, and we'll discuss that a little bit further on. But yes, I think that that is the key, that we're all working together, that it's kind of a combo. And we talked about that at the last workshop. That it's a little bit task oriented. It's a little bit helping the staff. It's a little bit helping the select board, and it's a little bit taking those ideas that are coming from the think tanks of the committees and implementing them, but making sure that it's not overwhelming the staff or not overwhelming the select board or not something that is in concert with our strategic plan. I think that as we work on our strategic plan, that'll become clear. But I think that that's really important, that we keep this communication and dialogue open so that we can all work together and move forward. So I had moved on for the next slide for us to discuss the policy. One thought that or one I one issue that Blake and I had discussed was how do we hold each group accountable? And so I didn't know if people wanted to discuss that now, or if we want to keep moving and just have a grand discussion at the end. Any thoughts from anyone?
Shiloh, thank you. I've got this on screen share, so I can't see it, but everyone everyone else has got a hands up. But I would like, there's a number of things I think I'd like to comment on about this, and I have a number of questions, but I think I'd like to hear the rest of the presentation and then come back to it because I think we're going to have to come back to that objective slide and and so forth. That's just my opinion.
All right, I'm all for that. If everyone else is okay with moving on and coming back to it.
Yep.
All right. All right. Well, let's do it. So next steps. We are coming upon a new year, which, as Mike knows for me, as I have this grand plan and this grand idea that it's a great time to implement this policy and to create initiatives for each committee and to work on different initiatives. The key that I think that The key that I think that we're all on the same page, like we had said before. Initiatives move, move the town forward, especially have to have the support of all three groups. I think there's definitely going to be some growing pains. But I think these steps are a way to a more effective select board and more effective committees. And so if Mike wants to jump in, please do. But these are some of the things that we've discussed as far as next steps in our action plan. As Blake had said, I think this is a good way to move. But Mike, a staff member, and I would like to meet with each chair of every committee and discuss potential projects for the year. So that staff member, whoever's chosen, would bring potential projects as well as the committee chair would consult with their committee and bring projects. And obviously, we would work on this together. And anyone else would be invited as well, but I think that it's important that we keep it small and make sure we find some effective initiatives we all want to work on. And the other thing that we discussed at the last workshop, and I think that it's important for us to follow through with this, is to have each committee create and submit a purpose statement, and then have the select board review that purpose statement and make sure that that's something that is theoretically going with our strategic plan, or ideally going with our strategic plan. I think that that's really important. And it also gives the committees a purpose and a literally a purpose, but gives them an idea of what they are trying to accomplish. I think that we have the committee chair present, after we have these two steps, we have the committee chair prevent their, present their initiatives to the select board so that everyone, really everyone is on the same page, and we know how everybody is moving forward. And we want to roll out the committee handbook like I referenced. It has been vetted many times by legal and staff and was approved by a previous select board. And I, it is a really good document. I, hopefully, everyone has consulted it and sees what it's all about. But I really think that that's important for us to roll that out, and that will help set some committee expectations as well. And then hopefully get, in the new year, some more active engagement with committees from select board liaisons and town, town staff. I think that we need to, we talked about accountability with our triangle and the graphic that Keely made for us, but I think that that's really important, that we get engagement from our liaisons and that they are present at committee meetings, and they can help bring information back to the select board and offer information that they might be privy to, to committees. And I think that that's important with town staff to be engaged and not necessarily present at every meeting, but really be open to having those conversations. Next. So these are some unique opportunities or ways for us to move some things forward, more of that action plan, like Blake had said. The bicentennial committee was super effective and just had some unfortunate circumstances called COVID-19 presented before them. But their time has come to an end, and so we'll be voting in the next few weeks to sunset them. And still, we'll be able to, and they're all in agreement with that. And so we'll be able to take them off of our list. But thank you to everyone who participated in that group. The Affordable Housing Committee is important, very important, but clearly not active. Like it says there, they last met once in 2017 and once in 2014. And so they're not active and therefore not effective. I'd like to propose that we sunset them as well in their current iteration. And hopefully, as our COP plan and our strategic plans take shape, we can recreate an affordable housing committee in a more effective way. Right, next.
You want to talk about the other three?
I'm going to, but on a different side.
Gotcha.
So this is some action that I mentioned at the last workshop, and I just wanted to explain further. I would like the public, the select board and town staff to consider some alternatives to the committee structure. These two committees, the dog advisory committee and the treasure, treasure chest monitoring committee work very well, but they don't follow traditional committee models. They don't meet the required number of meetings. They don't post an agenda each time they're at the transfer station or at the beach. They have numerous volunteers that help their committee. They've shown that they can work effectively under town departments, and the directors of these departments have offered to take these groups under their wing. Brian has said he'd welcome working with the treasure, treasure chest monitoring committee. And Chief McKenzie has agreed to work with the dog advisory committee. So I have proposed to make that on our next agenda, we vote to allow that to happen. And everyone is in agreement that this is a everyone who's involved in these current committees, as well as who would be overtaking their oversight, has agreed that this is a great way to move forward, is to move these two groups into work groups under the police department and the public services. So I just wanted to put that out there, and if we want to discuss that later on.
Lisa, Shiloh has his hand up.
Oh, okay, Shiloh.
Thank you. I'm not in disagreement with any of this necessarily, but I did want to ask, and maybe you just answered the question when you said everyone. But I, I think if we're going to any of this process, talk about any committee specifically, we should make sure that we've invited a Lisa representative from that committee to be at our workshop or board meeting, depending on what we're talking about, and have them as part of the discussion, because I don't know, for instance, if the dog advisory committee knows about this idea and is on board with it. This is the first, maybe not the first I've heard of it. I think we did mention it once as an idea, but I certainly wouldn't want to go roll with that unless they're part of the conversation, and the same with the others.
Yeah, and I think that's a good idea, that when we do discuss it, to invite the members or the chairs of those committees. Mike has spoken to, as far as the dog advisory committee, he's talked, he's spoken to the animal control officer, he's spoken to Chief McKenzie, and he's spoken to the chair of the committee. But I don't see why it wouldn't hurt to have that, those people speak at the meeting so that we are all on the same page. I totally agree.
So that's happened, so that for the ones we're talking about tonight, that communication has already happened with, with representatives from these committees, and they understand the idea of changing to a work group as opposed to a, a committee.
Yes, and they are all in favor of it. I have not spoken to them, Mike has, but it might, you know, I trust Mike, so.
Okay, yeah, sure. And that's fine. For this, that's, that's okay for now. I just want to make sure that going forward, that's, that's what we're going to to do. I have some other thoughts about that, but that's all for now.
Lisa, if, if I may, I'm having some screen troubles, so I apologize for butting in. I have, I'm still waiting for a call back from the chair of the dog advisory committee. I reached out to Alice, and she was actually out of the country. And she's going to call me when she returns, so I just wanted to clarify that. But all the other aspects, you're absolutely correct.
Yes, you are right, Mike. Sorry, I did.
Thank you.
But it had been discussed in the past, I believe. So anyway, we will definitely make sure everyone's on the same page as we move forward. I think that that's really important, but they are working effectively, but they don't, like I was prefacing it, they don't follow the standard committee rules that we have. And so I think that we need to be flexible and allow for these other types of groups to function, because they are doing a great job in our town. So next slide. Nope, back. Back, back, back. There we go. The Parks and Rec Committee. They last met in 2019, but didn't have a quorum. People know I've got kids. I love the Parks and Rec Department. They have supported us through COVID and kept my kids active constantly throughout the year. I love Parks and Rec. And they're an important committee, but they're clearly not functioning as an effective committee right now. Tasha has offered a solution because she recognizes the importance of community volunteers. And she has suggested sunsetting this committee and creating a friends group, which is a more popular model with Parks and Rec departments. And this is some information that Tasha has offered. I haven't spoken her, to her directly. This has just been via email. But she has, is happy to be at a select board meeting like Shiloh had requested to answer questions if we decide that this is a move that we think would be effective for the Parks and Rec Department. And I'll just read it quickly, so people know. "The list of needs that friend groups can help address is practically endless. Many groups are equipped to maintain trails, build political and financial support for park enhancements, promote parks at public events, and apply for grants. Perhaps even more important are the less tangible way friends group help a park and recs, park and rec system succeed. Friends groups are able to bring forth a voice to the community that is not bound by the municipal process, pushing forward issues that may not be possible from within the agency. Friends groups can, if empowered, provide a meaningful solution when an agency is tasked to do more with less. Engaging friends groups to support park needs should be the new normal." And that's coming directly from Tasha, and I, like I said, she's happy to speak to it more. But this is definitely a model that she would like to move forward with, and I think that that, it's important for us to respect that from her. And so I just wanted to leave with that. So let's move on to some discussion. I see Bill has his hand up.
Yeah, getting back to the, I was trying to snag you before you moved into the Parks and Recs one, but the treasure and treasure group and treasure chest, those seem to be more like volunteer organizations. Where a group of volunteers just simply works under, works under the works under the police department, or works under, in the case of the treasures, works under the you know, our town barn. They don't, I mean, they're not, they're not a traditional, as you say, they're, they're not a traditional, you know, committee in, in, in the perfect sense, but perhaps maybe, I don't know whether they would, whether they would, whether they feel a better sense of bonding as a committee, or whether they, or whether they're just, whether they would feel just as happy being part of an organization that just works to, as volunteers under the police department.
You know.
What structure they would feel better with.
Right. I think that those two groups specifically really just want to do their job. And like you said, Bill, actually, the treasure chest monitoring committee, if you look at this document that Kathy made up for us for the last workshop, treasure chest monitoring committee is actually technically inactive. They don't really have any members. They have one member, and she is fabulous, and she organizes all the volunteers. So.
Actually, Rex was doing much either, to be honest. I didn't.
So that's my understanding, and this is from my consultation with Kathy, which is fabulous, and I still appreciate all the information she gave me. And so they are kind of already functioning outside the bounds as it is. And I think same with dog advisory committee. They just want to be able to do their job. Dogs are important to them. So I think that it's important to have them involved in the discussion and invite them to the meeting, but I think that they are agreeable.
Thank you, Shiloh.
Thank you. So a couple things. First of all, Lisa, thank you again for putting this together and to Blake for thinking through some of these issues to get, make sure that we have a you're able to make, make progress on these. Before I get into any comments or thoughts or discussion on some of the, the things we had tonight, in particular, the policy points, or, or, yeah, the, the policy objectives or other, other advancements that we talked about tonight, which just to preface, I think generally what I've seen is very, very positive and definitely in the right direction. But I did want to ask a bigger picture question about this overall process, what we're doing tonight, as well as the series of, of meetings we're having about committees. At what point do you see our discussion specifically inviting committee, current committee chairs or committee members, I mean, obviously, any member of the public can come and and raise their hand, and we already have a couple of hands up, but and, and talk to us at these workshops, and that's, and that's great. But I wondered about, like, if we're putting out these, these policy ideas, which, you know, this is, this is the board, and these are committees that are overseen by the select board, so certainly this is, this is the right place to start. How do we include town staff? How do we include the people who are doing the work of the committees, the actual committees, the members themselves, or at least the representatives from them to be engaged, actively engaged in part of this process for, for setting this tripart, tripart objective setup, or tripart arrangement that we want to have. We want to have everybody, as Blake said, pulling all in the same direction. I think making sure their, their voices are, are part of this discussion is important. And I'm curious as to where you see that happening in this, in this series.
So I think that it's twofold. So one is the first recommendation I made is having, you know, Mike and I and staff members discuss with each committee chair. I think that as we move into the new year, I know it's budget season, but for committees, that's a little less relevant. I know the EDC, it's different, but hopefully that they can, in their next couple meetings, meet and talk about objectives that they want to work on. And then Mike and I and staff members are willing to meet with them.
I guess.
Two, let me finish.
Oh, sorry. Okay, it wasn't what I was asking, but that's fine. I'll.
Well, and then I think part two is that we need to also have a, in our series, another workshop. And I believe you and Blake spoke about this, and I think it's important, and it was something that I was going to bring up as far as our next step, so part, I guess it'd be part three in our series, is to have a workshop and invite all the committees, invite the staff, and let them speak, and maybe not have an organized slideshow like I've presented, but let them speak about the things that we've talked about in the past, and I can, I'd be willing to present those two slideshows. And if they had questions, comments, concerns on those, and then we could hear from them. I know initially I had proposed an ad hoc committee on committees. I don't think that that's the way to go at this point. I think that having these workshops and having these discussions is more important. And so that's how I see us moving forward, before we decide to vote on this policy or vote on what we think that the roles of committees are. It is ultimately up to the select board to decide what the roles are, and I think that's an important distinction. But I definitely want to hear from the people and the committees, and so I think that that's the next step.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. I appreciate that. So, I mean, and I, and I have a simple couple, like other comments about some of the slides we presented in, like the structure going forward, that kind of thing, which is, which is great, and that's what we want to be talking about. I really like what you, what you've come up with. But again, I, I think it's going to be in the interest, in the interest of making, of making sure that we, we don't stumble over ourselves. I'm happy to spend tonight talking about the different pieces, different slides, the different objectives, the different ways that things could be structured going forward. I just want to make sure that we're not do all that, and then we hear, you know, people are sitting there at home banging their heads against the screen because they, they had all these ideas that, that we're not talking about beforehand. So if this is the order that we want to do it, as long as the next one, I mean, again, people can comment tonight, but as long as the next one is about hearing feedback from committee members, committee chairs, town staff members on the thing, the ideas we've already discussed. Before we make any voting or bring anything to a formal meeting on, on adopting any policy, I'm, I'm fine with that, at least certainly, certainly for now.
Yeah, no, I think that that's important. And there's definitely be some growing pains and some unhappy people. And you know, we can't please everybody, but I think that we need to keep in mind that we want to make everybody effective, like I've said. And so we definitely need to make some changes. You know, there are some people that are not happy, and we want everyone to be happy. So we definitely want to have an effective select board, and we want to have effective committees, and we want to have happy staff members that are doing their fabulous work. So I think that, you know, we need to keep that, that triangle and that communication open. And so, yes, I definitely want to involve the staff, and maybe that's two separate workshops. A workshop with the staff, a workshop with committees as we move forward. And I think that's something we can decide. Sally?
I just wanted to say, I agree with Shiloh. I, the one thing that I've heard over and over again is it from committee members is that they want their chance to, to speak and to say how they view the committees and their role with the select board. And so I'm real glad to hear that that's one of the plans you've got.
Yeah, no, I think that that's really important. I do think, you know, and I'm all about the people. That's the whole reason I decided to do this, is I want everyone engaged. I want people fighting over positions for our committees. I want everyone engaged, and that's really important to me. But I think that, you know, we have to look from the top down, for lack of a better term, and know that I think that, you know, we have to look from the top down, for lack of a better term, and know that it's ultimately. The select board that it's, we decide the role of the committee. But it is very important that we do have public input and committee input and staff input. Any other board members?
Well, you're no board, but John has his hand up as does.
All right.
Yeah, I have a bunch more comments, but I'll definitely wait till after public comment and the people over the hands up from the public.
Right, John.
Thank you. So clearly. You've done a lot of very careful work here, Lisa, and you know, as always, much appreciated. It's still unclear to me. What the, when you, when you speak of these five committees. What the problem that we're trying to, or problems that we're trying to fix are. And. How the solutions that have been proposed will in fact. Fix the problem. Whatever it is. And I. As I mentioned earlier, I think it's very difficult to answer those questions. Without tackling the, the bigger philosophical questions and what the role of the committees are. How they fit into the structure of government. Some things that have been said over the last few minutes. Have, have kind of raised questions for me about whether we all really do. Share the same view of, of the structure of government town. If you still have access to your slide deck, I'm wondering if you could go back to, I believe it was the. The big statement about the, the function of committees. Because I, I would seek some clarification. Something in there, if you're able to put it up on the screen.
Blake's got access to that.
Long sec.
I think maybe it was slide six. So while Blake's doing that, I will just say that. So I was not privy to previous conversations, but I know that a workshop was held before identifying the issues. I think you've gone.
There, that's, that, that, that's the one that I was looking for. Thank you.
I'm not exactly, like Blake can speak better too, and he has previously spoken better to what the problem is. As a select board, or yeah, as a select board liaison and as a previous committee member. I think I can speak to the frustrations that committees feel. I've attended some committee meetings and. Have been, you know, I experienced what their frustrations are. And so I think that that's what we're trying to solve. And, you know, I don't have like an eloquent answer for you. But I can tell you that there are some frustrations and most of it comes from lack of communication. And so I think by setting these standards and setting this basis for what a committee. For a board truly is supposed to do is important. So that the board can be effective, the committees can be effective and achieve some successes. And I think that that's really important. Not only for the board in the town, but for the committee members. You want to achieve successes so that people feel engaged and have. Positive experiences and want to move other initiatives forward. But I will let Blake, if he wants to speak to what the initial problem.
I, I think John wanted to continue his comment on this.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. But I, I would like to get back to that and, 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 and thank you. And I guess I was asking. Kind of specifically with those five committees. But yeah, thanks. I would like the opportunity to just kind of continue with this comment and then. Address what you'd like to address. In, in, in the last sentence here. Encourage resident participation in advising and assisting town governments efforts. I, I, I don't want to assume. What is meant there. But I, I do want to clarify my perspective and I, I think that there's good grounding in our founding documents on this. That a town, town government, our town government is the town meeting. It's, it, it's really all of the residents. And the town meeting empowers the select board. To implement its will through the hiring of the town manager. Who in turn town hires the rest of the town staff. In a sense. The committees are subcommittees of the town meeting. Who are selected by the select board. That the town meeting empowers to do that work. I'm a little concerned. And, and, and again, I, I don't want to assume the meaning of these words, but I would like some clarification. I read this as saying that town government. Is the paid town staff. And it's not the town meeting is the town government. And that's why I have some concerns about. Basically carrying on with, you know, from where we were at the previous workshop on this. Basically putting the committees. Under the auspices or under the supervision of the town staff is really inverting. The proper relationship there because the town staff works for the town meeting.
Before you get on with that, I have definitely admitted that that was premature to bring up at the first meeting. I won't lie, you know, I'm learning as I go. And so. Let's just forget about how the committees and who's in charge, because I don't think anyone's in charge. I think it goes back to that. Triangle and that we're all accountable to each other. This policy, as Blake said, is definitely open to wordsmithing. And maybe we need to clarify. I've also had conversations with Blake regarding. Your concerns about the town meeting and staff and select board and their roles. And I won't lie, Blake can speak to it much more eloquently than me. And I don't want to put Blake on the spot. But I'm happy to confer with him and get back to you on exactly what we see that role. As. And then just to get back to your five committees, those five committees aren't necessarily. Have issues or problems. They're essentially defunct. And so I think that. To make them more effective, these are some moves that we can make. I think to make parks and rec instead of them not meeting at all. We can make them into a friends group that Tasha is more than willing to take over. And have them start doing some, make some action and they can do that. Dog advisory and treasure chest, they're seasonal, so it's not really relevant right now. But it's just, it takes something off the select board's plate so that we can move other things forward. The affordable housing committee, like I said, they haven't met in many years and they're essentially no longer working. And I'm all for keeping them, but I think that, you know, we need to sunset them in this iteration. And maybe as we work on our comp plan and our strategic plan, this is something that we can bring forward, you can bring forward. Or somebody else in the community can bring forward. How they think best that an affordable housing committee could work in our community. But right now it's a defunct and it's not working. And I think that we need to streamline and focus and be effective with the committees that we have.
Thanks for, for responding to those specifics. And, and, and I have to tell you, I, I didn't really intend to kind of. You know, pick on those, those particular five and, and, and how you've proposed to deal with it. But I would offer this. Affordable housing is something that I think there's an intense interest in this community. And the Parks and Rec Committee was at one time, I would say. One of our most vibrant town committees that had hugely enthusiastic and engaged. Members. I, I don't have the answer to the question I'm about to ask. And, and I don't mean to suggest that I do. But I think it might be helpful for us to ask the question. Where you have, you know, a committee that at one time was, you know, almost a model committee. And you have another committee that clearly has as its interest area, something that's on the lips of, of every. The member of this community, I shouldn't say every, so many members of this community. Why is it that we have no one, no one on them? I, I, I think asking those questions. And, and investigating. Might take us to a better informed place rather than the approach of, well, there's no one on it. We should just get rid of them.
I, I don't think that that's the approach we're taking. You know, like I said, we're trying to be effective. And you know, this is well before my time, but the affordable housing committee met once in two thousand fourteen and once in two thousand seventeen. And so they're not being effective for whatever reason. And so it's not that we're just trying to cut them. It's we're trying to move forward and maybe a different iteration of a task force or a. Committee or some other version, a work group, I don't know. But right now it's not functioning at all. So by having it linger there. It's not helping anybody and it's not being effective. You know, as far as parks and rec, the same thing. And the key is goes back to that accountability triangle and. Tasha currently is in charge of the Parks and Rec Department and. She, for whatever reason, it's the committee is not working well. I understand it was a vibrant community and like I prefaced everything. I. I'm a huge believer in the Parks and Rec Department, but I think that we need to. Do what the director of that department wants to do to make things more effective because she has, she's created a solution. And I think that that's really important that she's put herself out there and she's created a solution. And that's something I think if nothing else, we give it a try. And if that model doesn't work, we move forward and try another model. And I think that that flexibility is important. Excuse me. I do want to go ahead and have Ted make his comment if we can, if that's okay with you, John.
Yeah, thank you very much. And, and I look forward to continuing the conversation.
Thank you, Lisa. I have a, a general comment and it has nothing to do with any recent incidences regarding a former committee of mine. It's, it's a broader issue that has been on my mind. I have. Spent a lifetime, not quite the eighty years since Pearl Harbor, which we're celebrating today, but almost as long. Working on both sides of the fence, government side, not for profit side, public side, volunteer side. And I've done this internationally, nationally in the two states. And it's a big interest in mine. They, they, my doctoral work a while ago was directly on this issue, which was. Public sector decision making, how it works, how it doesn't work. So I have a professional interest in this and I'd like to stick to that. Perspective. Before I get into that real quick, on the affordable housing, I was the, I am the drafter of the. Of the housing, original drafter of the chapter on housing in the comp plan that is now being considered. And I have a big interest in this and the discussion we had in the comp plan was, was lengthy. And out of that, it complex. And out of that came a recommendation, which is in the comp plan. Which is to set up a, we didn't want to call it a committee, but some side of entity that would look at all these issues relating to. To. Housing, particularly the middle income housing and affordable housing. And so that's in the comp plan. So. If the, the current committee, I, I have no problem with changing that structure. But the, the, I just wanted to make sure we all knew that there is a recommendation for a. A, a task force of something that's, that was almost the key recommendation coming out of the comp plan.
Thank you, Ted. And I think that's important. And I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I just want to like emphasize that. You know, obviously you are well entrenched in affordable housing in the comp plan and you recognize that maybe the committee structure is not. The best way to approach that. And that maybe there's something else, but obviously it's in the comp plan. It's important. And that's something the select board wants.
Yeah, we, we talked about, we didn't, we, the committee thing came up a little bit in discussion. So we didn't, I think we give some sort of a task force. The town of Kenny Bunkport did that. And to set up a special group of whatever they called it and they, they addressed these issues. And so we were sort of thinking what they'd done. Back to the larger issue, I appreciate. Very much the work that you've been doing. We're seeing tonight. It's important and it's, it needs to continue. To me though, the issue isn't. One of lack of communication or, or, or necessarily. Well, basically a communication. It's more what kind of town government we have. Or what kind of town government we want to have. And in my experience. Lifelong and including in the town of Kenny Bunk and serving on some committees in the town. There's two sort of basic models of. Government, I mean, very basic. One is where the town government is more like a corporation. And a corporation has a CEO and has staff and, and it has a board of directors. Whose job is to appoint the, the CEO and, and to approve the budget. And that the corporation has the stockholders and, and, and customers. Customers buy the product and the stockholders vote once a year on the budget. That is a, a model that fits very closely to, to what we have in the, in the town of Kenny Bunk. Today. And that, that part of the. Issues related to committees and you struggle with this. What are they? Are they the stockholder? That, that is, receives a lot of good public relations and votes once a year, or are they customers? And that's a little unclear. As customers, we are the citizens of the town, very lucky. To receive the superb services that the, the town government provides us. And so as customers, we're happy. It's in the stockholders, we are sort of limited in some sense to this sort of periodic limited role. The other kind of model, municipal model is that might say a public partnership model. And that your draft policies speak at that level, in which case, in which the. A government, the local government is, 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 has a active set of collaborators in the town. And, and the town government is a wider concept than, than the. A town manager and the paid staff overseen by a, a board because that, that enables, and the literature is full of this, enables. It loses some necessary balance of power that is necessary for, for any public. Any governmental system to really survive. There's got to be a balance there between, between the different groups. In your case, the, the three. Partners here. And so the, the, and the triangle, the balance. It's got to be a key issue. And it, to me, it has to do with, okay, what is the type of government we want? And that needs to be addressed in order to decide, well, what's the effective committee? Or what should this committee do? And, and what is its, what is the relationship? What is the role of the, what type of government do we have? And what do we think about the participation of the public is a larger issue? And that, that's. Right, that's some experience in the town of Kenny Bunk, but this, this applies to, to my other experience throughout my entire life. And I think that's the fundamental issue that is being addressed here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted. And it's interesting that you say that because I think in a moment of extreme frustration, I may have gone to Blake and Mike and said. I don't want to deal with this committee issue. I think what we really need to do is start with a charter revision and decide what kind of government we want. But that does not solve our immediate issue. And I think that, you know, right now Blake speaks very eloquently to. The type of government that we have. And I think that it really is very important that we create that. Balance of power.
He said, if I may, let me, let me interrupt for a sec to, to answer both John and Ted. The, the draft policy that I wrote. Refers to advising and assisting town governments efforts. Section one oh two, one dot oh two of our charter is entitled form of government. The form of government provided by this charter shall be the town meeting slash board of. The form of government provided by this charter shall be the town meeting slash Board of Selection, Selectmen slash Town Manager. So town meeting slash Select Board slash Town Manager. And it's in that, it's in that definition that I am referring to town governments. So that includes all three parties. The town meeting, which John spoke to, the Select Board, who have been delegated powers by the Charter and the Town Manager, who likewise has been delegated power by the Charter. We don't operate by a habitual plebiscite. We go to town meeting in June, we have a, an election in November. On occasion, we have special elections in between. But generally speaking, the day-to-day operation of our town has been delegated by the town meeting to the Select Board and to the Town Manager. But in my policy statement, I was referring to all three, the town meeting, the Select Board and the Town Manager, which would include the staff.
Thank you, Blake. And you definitely speak well to the different aspects and how they all coincide. And so I appreciate you speaking up. And let's go to Shiloh.
I, I would like to speak, but I think Ted had his hand up and I see Patty with her hand up in the, in the attendees. I do have a couple of statements I'd like to make after we hear from them.
And I, I just want to give us a time check here. We have about fifteen minutes before we have to get to action steps.
Mine would, I would speak well to that, I hope.
All right. So let's go to Patty, since she hasn't spoken yet.
There, muted. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is just a quick proposal. I'd like to propose for discussion at the future workshop in which you're going to engage with committees. I'd like to propose a position be created of an ombuds person to sit on the Select Board as a non-voting member. And the purpose of the ombuds person on the Select Board would be to represent the initiatives and the needs and the concerns of committees. This position would complete the triangle that Lisa presented, so that committees were represented at meetings like this, because you have the Select Board, you have Mike, sometimes you have Joel. The ombuds person would complete that triangle. And the ombuds person would be elected from existing committee chairs. And I think that this would go a long way towards solving some of the issues that committees feel about being recognized and having a way to bring forth their, their initiatives for direct action.
Thank you, Patty. That's definitely something I cannot speak to right now, but I am willing to investigate it. And let's talk about it further at the next workshop. Thank you. Let's go to June. She hasn't spoken, who hasn't spoken yet.
Hi there. First, I got to say, Lisa, awesome job. Put this together so well. It was very thought out. And Blake, I know you had a part in it as well, but I'm very happy to be here. I'm greatly encouraged by this entire conversation. I want to be a part of a positive change. And I just want to say that my interaction with the Select Board as both a committee member and as a resident, it really has been exceptional. I feel like you've all been very thoughtful, responsive, passionate. And I know that you all have the best interest of Kennybunk in your hearts. Honestly, if I were to gauge though, my personal satisfaction with donating my time to an organization and I relate it directly to the amount of time I donate to any single organization, my overall rating honestly is dissatisfied. And I'm sure many of you can relate to that as well. And I want to fix that. I don't, I don't know how to go about it. I can say that I, I think the, I think it has to be said. I think the biggest disconnect is between staff and committee members. You talked about how staff members should feel like they're partners. And, and there's a disconnect because I feel like their goals are to accomplish things assigned to them by, I, I'm not really sure how their assignments go, either through the Select Board or the Town Manager. And they don't always, you know, you feel like you're up against a wall if you suggest something new. I'm really concerned about the town just as a whole becoming stagnant. I don't know how we go about having new ideas introduced. And I mean, for instance, the train, I mean, does like, and not to be a repeat, but I'm just using an example, like, when would that have come up? If a committee didn't bring it up, does it just sit somewhere? And I think that's like a major part of things that if the Select Board is really sitting down and coming up with new ideas and things to present to the voters. I mean, we can't be stagnant and only do business every day as a town. I think we have to say to people, what do you think? What do you want to do? Where do you want this, this town to go? In what direction? And I, it shouldn't be status quo. I want to be the exceptional community that we are. And I don't want to just have you as a Select Board, you know, putting a stamp of approval and moving things forward. I want to figure out how, if it's, if it's not the committees that you want to use as being the way to present new ideas, then challenge you as a Select Board to, to dedicate some time somewhere that you brainstorm or you have, I know you have plenty of time, you, you, you all have open doors and, but to really spend some thoughtful time putting that together. And just one other, like, I think it might be great, not only like doing maybe some interactive activities between committees and, and, you know, I, I do miss the volunteer and I understand because of COVID, we can't do it. But maybe we do some challenging, you know, go down to Garden Street Bowl and, and bowl, you know, have competition between some of the committees or, you know, the Select Board or try to get us all, you know, on the same playing field so that we feel like we are part of a team, because I don't feel like we're all on the same page all the time. And lastly, I, I love training. I've always been the big advocate when I was a manager in local government. And, you know, if we were to have some encourage our staff members to attend some volunteer training to learn how to residents and because, and consumers, I mean, the committee members remember also are customers of the town and of your picture. So I would think that there's a lot of training opportunities out there to allow for staff to make volunteers feel inclusive and part of their team. I think that's all I need to say tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, June. I'm just going to move quickly through your points, not because they're not important and I definitely want to discuss them further. But I just want to keep things moving. But I think that, that, you know, that graphic that my stepdaughter made is what we're all working towards. And we want to keep that communication. And I agree that there's definitely been some issues with staff communication and committees. And hopefully, and Mike knows that I am emphasizing this, that we want to include them in this. It's not just a conversation between the Select Board and the committees that we want to get staff buy-in as well. And that, that's really important. And then I'm all for the team building. Whenever we find it appropriate, we're all going to go on a ropes course together. The whole town staff and the committees and everything, even Blake.
Been there, done that, got the T-shirt, so.
Oh, we're going to do it. We're going to do some team building and we're going to create.
I'll do a trust fall. That's all I'm doing.
I'm not doing anything athletically against Shiloh.
No, no, it's going to be great. That's, that's what I did. That's my twenties. I was a team building leader. So we're.
We have ten, we have ten minutes, Lisa, and I see Susan has her hand up.
Let's go to Susan and then we'll go to Shiloh quickly and then we'll wrap things up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hi, Susan Bloomfield. I just wanted to raise something that I believe maybe didn't come up this evening. And what it pertains to is putting some time into the, the restrictions placed on committee members, if any. And, and one note, just to define this a little, was years ago, I was on the West Kennybunk Village Committee and paid a lot of attention to what was happening in town government. And for example, the agendas of the Select Board. And what I did was occasionally I would see something that pertained to the folks who live in West Kennybunk. And I would make just a, a little flyer about that agenda item and, and put it on the bulletin board or in the post office. So that people in that area would know that there was something going on that they would be, you know, could be involved with, something that would interest them. And I thought that was good public service on my part. And I was told by a, this was prior to the liaisons. So it was a Select Board, I believe he was the chair, that that was improper. That, that somehow I was the, you know, I, I don't know, drawing attention to that kind of, I, I don't know, I didn't understand it. But the, the take-home message for me was that I could be more effective not on a committee working outside of the, the town committees and government than on. And I, I would just like a, a little bit of consideration put to, I didn't find that what I was doing for public outreach in West Kennybunk was improper in, in any way. But this Select Board member felt that, I, I don't know, I was creating trouble or noise or something like that. So maybe just some discussion about restrictions and, you know, roles and responsibilities and ethical behavior for committee members might be appropriate going forward.
Thank you, Susan. And I'm so sorry you went through that. And I think that I can speak for our entire board at this point, that, that we would not feel that way. We really want community engagement and we want people to speak out and let people know what's going on and engage in our Select Board meetings. So it's really unfortunate that that happened to you. I know earlier in the year, we did have our committee meeting with Natalie, the town attorney, on what is acceptable and what's not. But maybe we need to have more of a colloquial discussion as well as what's acceptable for committee members. But I think overall, I can speak for the board and say that we want you and we want community members and we want everyone to speak about what is on the Select Board agenda and come and talk to us. That, that we really want engagement. And I think that, you know, that's how we want to move forward. So thank you for your comments. All right, Shiloh, I'll give you one.
We got six minutes, so let's make.
Can I, can I speak to that just briefly? I understand that we want to land the ship, you know, land the plane on time and so forth. But I don't see us having another one of these workshops, given our schedule until sometime in January. And so I, I would just, at this point, if we're stopping at eight, I don't really have anything else to say, because I think a few, a couple of things I have might take up the remainder of our time. So I would propose that we go extend an extra fifteen minutes. And if we're not willing to do that, then I guess I'll talk in January.
Um, I would like to say that since this is our first meeting, putting ourselves kind of under those restrictions, I'm okay with extending it as long as Mike and Blake and everyone else are okay with that, because I think this is important. And this is, I know Blake.
We had a lot of public comment, which I think is good. And I'm glad we did. I just wanted to be able to say, I think there's, just in order, in order to actually enact those action items, touch base on a couple of things we talked about in the presentation, we probably could use another, like twenty minutes from now at least to do that. And, and then pick up where we left off on the next one.
Let's go ahead. I, 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 I'm not in favor, but go ahead.
Okay, maybe it won't take that long. I'll, I'll keep it brief. The big, I just wanted to say, big picture, I think the, I want to just say what I think is the, is the organization that we have and then sort of the, the crux of what we're trying to solve. And then a couple of comments on the objectives that have been put forward tonight as proposed, the proposed policy, the first draft. And then I would like to, to suggest that we, maybe in the interest of time, because I think if we did go through and say, let's invite everybody, all the, all the committee members, try to get to a workshop, try to get all that sorted in one hour and a half session. I think that's going to be very difficult. But I would like to say, my proposal to this, to this, to Lisa and, well, to Lisa, I guess, because you've been the one running this, is that we invite, we send, proactively send this policy proposal with any addendums or changes that we've made to each of the committee heads and say, we're having a workshop in January at a time to be determined. And hopefully we'll get that soon sorted out. Or I'm saying January, I don't know. And then suggest that any additions, comments, feedbacks, you know, position statements, anything you want to say to the board that you want, you feel like you can make a statement, send those ahead of time. So we have a chance to see that, think about it, and then have them come to the meeting. So we'll all have read some of the comments that we can be made public, however we want to do that. And then the, the, the discussion will be more informed at the time of the next workshop. And people will have a more thorough and maybe thoughtful way of approaching what, what quote, the problem is, because there's probably not one. I think I would imagine that one of the challenges here is that it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. Some of the committees have different challenges or issues. Blake alluded to that earlier in the meeting. So I think it would be good to hear from different, different perspectives, revisit the policy, propose, propose policy, make any additional changes we need and then move forward. That's one thought. And then the, just speaking to a couple of the policies, I don't have it up in front of me right now, but I think I can remember it well enough. I didn't, you alluded to my, my concern about the status reports. And it wasn't so much that I don't think we should have those. I just wanted to be cautious about, about including something like quarterly status reports as a policy across the board for all committees. Because as I said, I don't know that, I don't know that that makes sense for every committee. It might, we also have the board liaison, which I agree need to be actively engaged. And so there's some communication there. Maybe for some committees, it's quarterly and others, it's once a year, depending on the garden committee may not need to report to us quarterly. For instance, so I think the, the objective of active communication and, and engagement makes a lot of sense. And maybe as an example of that could be quarterly status reports for committees that need that. Or, and so I think that might be something that work, that is developed each year at the start of the year by that group that gets together to talk about objectives, something like that. That's, that's, that was my only issue with it, not so much that, that's not the right path forward. And then the, just to, in the interest of nibbling around the edges a little bit, the idea of meeting with the committee chair, with Mike, with a staff member and with you is great at the start of the year to like prep, rather than trying to do it all in a, in a public meeting initially, but then then bring that to the public meeting makes sense. I think whatever committee you're meeting with should also have the board liaison from that committee in that. They're the one who's going to be with them all year, be part of that. And then one distinction I thought I wanted to make, go back to, to make in your presentation, you talked about how the select, the, the school board does things with the, their committee structure. But that is very much analogous, analogous to our subcommittees on the board. So the ordinance subcommittee has board members that are a subcommittee of the board and have town staff that are relevant to whatever we're discussing come to those subcommittee meetings. That's different than public, primarily public committees. And so I think the analogy is our subcommittees to the select, to the, to the school board committees. And it's probably not a perfect one-to-one analogy, but I think there's two different kinds of committees that we're talking about here. And that's, I think, important and important distinction. That might be it. The only other thing I guess I had was to say that I also see from the I also see from the, the, the structure is that, you know, John made a point about the, the directive of the, the select board derives from the town meeting, which is absolutely true. But then, as, as Blake pointed out, we have certain powers of, you know, and, and responsibilities that have been delegated to us and to the, and to town manager and then subsequently to town staff. The committee structure, as it's currently set up, is to work on, let me describe this. We, we, our, our authority derives from the town meeting and therefore the committee structure does as well. But I would take exception to the idea that it's, it's, the committees are separate, a separate branch from the town, town meeting and then somehow separate. And, and this, this idea of this sharing, this co-equal sharing, separation of power is not really analogous to the executive legislative and judicial branch. We're all kind of part of the legislative branch and we're enacting what the town meeting says to do. And the committees are one way of doing that. It's supposed to work in concert and as part of the, or a flow from the select board. And so the structure that we have in place that you propose is this tri-party arrangement is exactly how I feel like we should move forward. But it isn't the same thing as saying there's a brand, there's co-equal branches of government. That's not, that's not what we're talking about here. It is something that we should all be working together as a partnership to move, to advance the issues that are brought to us by the, the town meeting. So there's that. And then what I see is the crux of the challenge that we're trying to overcome. Again, this is just how I see it. And I'd love to hear more feedback from committee members and so forth. We've heard a little bit of that tonight, is that there is a challenge with communication. And that's true. There's a challenge of resources. We have limited resources in the town. And that's staff time, it's monetary, it's, it's physical items. How do we partition the resources to get the jobs done? And so I think your, your proposed solution, the objective of making sure everybody's sitting down and on the same page at the start of the year and then check-ins throughout the year to make sure that that's happening, will go a long way to alleviating that because we can point, if there's challenges with, from pushback from town staff, for example, we can say, well, we agreed to that at the start, you agreed to that at the start of the year. If that is no longer available, possible, let's make changes, but that's what we started. That's, it's a common starting point. So I, I, I think that will go a long way to adjusting it. So I, I mean, I think we're on the right track here. I feel like that's the, the problem we're trying to solve and I think we're getting there. But again, I would like to hear back from some of the people in the trenches that are, maybe have a different point of view. That's all I have for today.
I, I would agree that the, the, the problem, if we were to define it, is contemplated in the phrase agreed upon initiatives. And, and that's where we have a disconnect. And, and that's where committees feel that they have, that they have a desire to participate in creating new initiatives and, and giving input to the projects that the town undertakes. And the, the, the key here to success is making sure that all three parties to this relationship are in agreement about what those projects or initiatives are at any given moment in time. And that's not what's happening now. Currently, there are committees that, that create their own initiatives and then reach out to town staff who have limited time and limited resources and expect them to, you know, to participate or, or support their efforts.
Right. And so, so that, that, assuming that's hap, that, I mean, I'm not denying that's happening. What I'm suggesting is that what June had brought up earlier and, and what is in your fourth, your fourth objective in the policy, which is to say, those things are important because they're clearly a, important to a, a segment of people that are actively engaged in the town and maybe have their finger on the pulse of what's important to the, relevant to energy conservation or to economic development or to any of the other committees that we have. There should be a process by which those new ideas or initiatives can come.
Yeah.
And that's brought forward and, and be, and so I don't want to, I want to suggest that June's, June's point about saying, well, if you think that's not important for the committees, then we need to have, come up with it on the part of the select board. I don't think, we explicitly are saying, we do think it's important. And I want to make clear that we are looking for a way to make that happen.
That's why I created the, the fourth, the, the fourth objective. And it relates back to agreed upon initiatives. And that's, that's the, the, the fundamental basis of a tri-party relationship or any relationship for that matter is, is common vision. I mean, and, and we need to get to that place where our vision of, of what the town needs to be done, needs to do, I should say, is in alignment with the, the town meeting and the staff. And, and, and if we can get to that place, then trust will ensue. And that's, that's what we're really trying to get to here is where those three parties trust each other and are working effectively to use Lisa's refrain to accomplish those things. And, and that's not happening currently and it hasn't happened in the twelve years that I've been involved in town government. I can, I can report that that's been a disability of, of our form of government for as long as I've been involved.
Okay, well, I, I personally think that this, from what I've heard, I'm not party to all of the discussions that are, happen between members of the committees and staff and members of the board and so forth. But from what I've heard and what I understand and the discussions we've had, I do feel like this is the move in the right direction. I'm very curious to hear from, from the committees and from town staff. I mean, I know there's members of the town staff watching us tonight. I know Mike's here and if they're, you know, their voice, I guess, here. I don't know if there's another mechanism that we can hear directly from members. Maybe that's not appropriate, but of town staff. But I do want to know that, I think it's really important that we get the perspective from, from them as well as, because otherwise, like you said, it's not, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a functioning, working relationship. If we decide, hey, we have a great idea, we're going to implement it, but it's not workable. So let's, you know, let's make sure we get that voice, all of the voices in here.
I think you and I are saying we're in agreement, so.
Definitely. Thank you for all your comments, Shiloh. And I think that that was an important distinction you made with my triangle graphic, that it's not a government legislative judicial, it's a, just a, it's an accountability diagram and a relationship diagram. It's not the. And so I think that that's really important. And as far as the checking in quarterly or whatever it is, I think that's workable and it can't be a standard for everybody. And maybe it's something like, hey, the Energy Efficiency Committee has done all their things, do, do, do. So in March, they want to say, hey, can we come before you and propose some new things? You know, instead of saying in February, they want to come before us. We say, hey, let's hold off till March because that's when we're prepared to accept new initiatives or whatever and just have that standard. But it's definitely flexible and I don't think it needs to be a requirement. But I think it's an opportunity if committees want to. That we have that open to them. So I think that that's a different way to look at it. Instead of requiring a check-in, it's a chance. They know they can check in then. But thank you for all your comments. I don't know if I, like, remember them all, but.
Mostly it was just me ranting. Thank you.
Yeah, no, and I think that the ranting is okay and that's why we're here. But we have to create an action plan. And so that is our next step. So let's see. I think that we've all, well, we haven't all, but I think the general agreement is to move on with part three of a workshop and invite committee members. I do like your suggestion, Shiloh, where people submit their questions, comments and concerns. And maybe that will help things move a little more effectively. And I can move things, if people have similar questions, we can, you know, kind of group those together and things like that and move things forward a little more effectively. So I think a future workshop is great. I don't know, like you mentioned, what the proper mechanism to involve town staff is. And I will leave that up to Mike, if that is involving them in the workshop or having him speak for them. Or I, I want to make sure that we do it right with the staff and not bombard them and not put them in a position where they can be, you know, I don't, what's the word I'm looking for? But they don't want anything to, no retribution or, is that the word I'm looking for? Anyway, so I think that those are, you know, that's an important action plan. And then I also had initiated some next steps. Having the, each committee create a purpose statement. And I think that that is going to be important to move forward and then have them bring that forward to Mike and I. So I need a little more direction, I guess, what people are thinking the next action plan should be or the next steps to the action plan after part three of the workshop.
Bill.
Okay, I think, you know, getting back to what you were saying, Lisa, about gathering, you know, getting feedback from town staff, getting feedback and organizing the meeting that we can have with other committees. I'm not sure what Mike wants to do about staff, but about staff, yeah, statements. But in the case, definitely have a meeting with the, with other committees to try and, try to get that all flushed out. And then, but I think you can even, I mean, it, it doesn't have to wait for the next, for the next meeting to even to get, to get the different committees to come up with, you know, concepts, you know, with, with their mission statement for the next year ahead. That could start, that could start now and as far as I'm concerned. And then we could, then as those, as those come in, we can look at, we can look at them and perhaps maybe with those committees, have tweak them if necessary to, to move forward. So those are, those are just my thoughts. I, I, I think, I think those two move forwards and that, and that extra, that other meeting will be, are enough for now.
Mike, did you have something you wanted to say about how we would include staff input?
Yeah, it, it would be very important to me to have staff engage as much as possible. I think they will be able to offer some added insight from their experiences, which I think will add in the communication that we're all looking for and ultimately help grow that three-legged stool or the triangle that Lisa's presented. I think the collaboration is terribly important. I think I can speak for staff in saying that we want nothing but to advance this initiative, to develop stronger relationships and be able to work together. So I, I look forward to that.
Thank you, Mike. And I, I thank you, Bill, as far, I think we can reach out as liaisons to each committee and let them know that this is something that we'd like them to work on for the new year. And then are people okay if we bring things, if Mike puts some things on the agenda for us to vote on? Is that further discussion or discussion on, at a meeting?
This is, at what time, what's the timeframe for this?
Mike had suggested to me that possibly putting the dog advisory committee and the treasure chest committee. Thank you.
But we're not, not the bigger picture policy stuff.
No, 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 sorry. He had suggested putting those two items on the next agenda for the fourteenth. And I thought that that would be a good way to sort of move things forward and see some positive results.
So one, one of the, I think that's, that's, if you're asking me, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I do want to suggest something else as an action step. I think that we should circulate the policy and policy objectives among the board and if, if possible, to committees and the public so that we can have a markup of the proposed policy. The objectives were not exhaustive. They were just a, a first shot at putting them together. But it, it would seem to me that one good next step would be to circulate the policy and see if, if we can get some further input, additional ideas.
I like that.
We could do that with staff as well. Make sure that they're seeing that.
Now Bill's got his hand up. Bill.
Yeah, one thing, Mike, how soon before you're going to be in touch with the, with the people from the dog advisory committee? I don't want to be in a position where we're going to vote on something, pull the wool up from under them, pull the rug out from under them without at least having a chance to have a conversation. I don't think that's fair to them.
No, I completely agree, Bill. I had reached out to Alice. As I said, she was out of the country. She was going to call when she came back. I will reach back out to her. And certainly we want to give the courtesy for any input that they may have for the board to consider. And Alice may not be back or she may have just become sidetracked a little bit. So I will, I've made a note to reach out to her tomorrow. She's the chair for anyone that wasn't aware.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, definitely. I don't want to move forward without communicating with her first. So that is important.
John's got his hand up. John, if you could be brief, we're trying to land the plane here.
Super brief. Since no one likes doing duplicative work, I believe that all of the boards and committees were asked to draft a mission statement somewhere around four to five years ago. I don't know what the compliance rate was, but I think that the town clerk is in possession of those. And I doubt that's the only person who's in possession of those. And also probably worth everyone on your board taking a look at the reports from all of the town committees that are supposed to be filed with the town report. Again, I don't know what the compliance rate is since it stopped being published on paper. I admit to not reading everyone. I used to read everyone in the paper. But I think that would be good groundwork for, for your board as well. Because I believe that, you know, some of that work has been done.
Actually, the town report is available and, and a paper could come into the town manager's office area. And there are copies of the annual report.
And I just wanted to say that attached to the agenda is this document that Kathy created. And it does have the current purpose statements or mission statements for each committee attached to it. And I think that A, it's important to update it if it's been four or five years. And B, some of them are very vague. And so I think it's important that we're a little more specific. So if you want to check those out, they are. And that was my purpose for asking Kathy to do it so that we have everyone's purpose statement all in one document. And she added some amazing other information to it as well. On the, I will put everything together for our action plan and add it to, sorry about that. And add it to our, what's the word I'm looking for? Comments from this meeting.
Minutes.
Thank you. It's obviously getting late, Blake. You're right. It's time to end it. But I will add it to the minutes and I will circulate it to everybody and make sure we're all on the same page. And the other thing I wanted to say is we had talked about, or I had talked about committee handbook rollout. And I think that that's another important action step that we should consider in the new year. So I will add that and I will give you all a chance to review that committee handbook. That is attached to tonight's agenda. And maybe we can discuss that at a future meeting.
Okay, and, and Lisa, I'm going to ask you to summarize the action steps and shoot that out to all of us so that we, that we all know what we agreed to do here. And I don't see anyone else that has their hand up. So, yeah, Bill. Oh, no. Okay, he's, he's waving goodbye.
Okay, thank you for the extra time. I think it was important to get that up, get that out there. So.
Okay, so I think we're done. It was a, a great meeting. Thanks to Lisa for all of her work. Thanks to all of the people who put in the time and effort to attend and, and comment. We appreciate those remarks. Engagement is critically important at the town meeting form of government. So every time somebody is willing to dip their toe into public discourse, that's a useful thing for all of us. It, it gives us hope that the town meeting form of government can persist if, if we so desire. Okay, so without any further ado, I'll say goodnight.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thanks, Emily. Thanks, Blake.
Yep, thank you everyone.